I call this work session of the Lou Ray Town Council to order. Please stand and join me in a moment of silence. Now, last councilperson, Lillard, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you call the role, please?
Meredith.
Here.
Mr. Pickers. Ms. Lillard?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
And I believe Mr. White is by... Oh, he's not.
Is Mr. Webb here? I mean, White?
Alex isn't...
No, he's... We got email from him. He said he might try to call in. But it didn't...
Sorry, man.
I want to welcome back an old familiar face. Brian, you want to do the honors?
Yep. Just wanted to introduce Brooke Duney, our new planners and technician. She's back with the town, back home. And she started Monday, yesterday, and this is her first week, and she picked right up like she's never been gone. So, we're happy to have her and ready to continue to get some things done and plan its own exactly.
Nice to have you back, Brooke. All right. Discussion items, 15 Campbell Street Development Plan Proposal. Mr. Braden Herman, Mr. Herman, if you will go to the microphone if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Full name and home address?
Yeah, well, yeah, we might want to send you a Christmas card.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Brad Herman, home address is 4555 Dexter Street Northwest, Washington DC, 2007.
Danielle, did you get all that?
No.
I'm sorry.
Maybe a little slower there, Mr. Herman.
4555 Dexter Street, comma, northwest, Washington DC, 2007. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Herman, we thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you, guys, for having me. I appreciate, I know, short notice, short agenda, and also, I know, a little bit out of order with the planning commissions, so we have a little bit of a timing matter with the contract on this building, so I appreciate you, guys, taking the time to meet with me and talk about this project. Y'all tell me, I've sent over some information. I'm happy to kind of go through that information. I'm happy to take questions. I really, you know, y'all tell me what the best use of this time is from your perspective. I love, you know, talking about this project. We're excited about the project. We're really excited about Lou Ray. But, you know, you all tell me where you want to start. I'll start at kind of the beginning, kind of DNA, or we can answer questions.
Yeah, why don't you start the beginning? There are folks that listen in who haven't gotten the information that we've gotten, so just get everybody up to speed. Yes, sir.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. So, I'm going to maybe take a step back and talk a little bit about kind of myself and their two other investors that are involved. And our focus is workforce housing, right? So, as stated in my address, I live in Washington DC where housing is unaffordable. I've lived in New York City where housing is unaffordable. In a prior life, I was a corporate attorney, but spent about six months doing pro bono landlord-tenant work up in New York City, kind of watching people, you know, effectively as development came in, getting pushed out of their apartment. So, I've kind of seen this from a bunch of different angles. And we actually originally started looking at kind of how do we address the workforce housing issue, kind of, I don't know, an hour outside of DC, right? Because people have a right to kind of live near the place that they live. We actually couldn't solve that problem an hour outside of DC. Saw this building online, fell in love with the building, started talking to people in Lou Ray, and understood that there's actually a workforce housing shortage in this area as well. So, that, you know, kind of was the nucleus of how this all came together. The building's built between 1910 and 1930. It's 33,500 square feet, zone, mixed-use development, so obviously, there's the ability to put in a bunch of apartments long-term, you know, all the apartments will be long-term rentals, year longer. But there's also the ability to put in other things in that building, you know, by the zoning. We need to put in other things besides just residential. So, I've had a number of conversations with people in Lou Ray and Page County, kind of over, I've actually looked back at my emails this morning. I think I started spending time here back in mid-March, I think it was around March 18th, and have been here almost every week for a day or so, just trying to talk to people, understand what else the town wants and what else the town needs. And so, that is kind of what has been the impetus for our plan. So, I say that because as I walk through and talk about what's going to go into the building, if you all think that there is something we have that is off-base, please, please, please tell us, right? This is not a, how to describe it, we're not building the iPhone, which is something that nobody's ever heard of, thought about before, and then the hopes that they come. Like, we are trying to build against what the needs and the desires of the town are, right? So, with that in mind, the building, again, is 33,500 square feet. It's roughly 9,000 feet on the third floor. The second floor, which is what is on the ground floor of facing Campbell Street, is about 12,000 square feet. And then, the first floor is 12,000 square feet. The entire top floor would be converted into apartments. About two-thirds of the second floor would be converted into apartments. The remaining third would be co-working space. And then, as you move down to the first floor, we have plans for a restaurant, a rentable commercial kitchen. There will be a gym and some storage for the apartments. There will be kind of what we're calling an entertainment space, which will just be kind of a free, open entertainment space with, you know, think of like pool tables, stand-up video games, maybe indoor cornhole, you know, sort of stuff. And then, there will be a music venue slash kind of community space slash rentable event space, kind of in the, I guess, what is effectively the front right side of the building. So, that's kind of the plan as it is imagined today. But again, like, to the extent that folks have, you know, input or comments on it, we are very much kind of in the not etched in stone phase, and so, we've got a lot of flexibility. Maybe last comment is, the restaurant, you know, we're not going to operate the restaurant ourselves. We'll bring in a restaurant tour. The format for the restaurant, though, is, and again, in talks with folks in the town, we want something that's kind of like an accessible, everyday restaurant. There are a number of like great, kind of high-end restaurants here in town, which is fantastic, but like, we're looking to put in something that is more kind of, you know, everyday, like, it may draw tourists, that's fine, but it's more kind of built for the community than it is built for the tourism trade. So, what else can I tell you?
Counsel, any thoughts, any questions?
See, y'all have pretty big plans for that back field then, right? The entry for the first floor.
So, the backfield, yeah. The idea, I think, is a couple of things. I think by code, at least our current understanding, is we're going to have to build a fire structure back there, right? So, we're obviously going to have to sprinkle the entire building, and then, there'll be some sort of fire structure so you can get out of the third and the second floors. So, that'll kind of take up some space in the back there. But, yeah, then the idea is that the restaurant, right, that's located there, because to your point, is you're standing behind the building, right? The restaurant would be on the, kind of, the left...
In the parking lot.
Yeah, the left, the left side or whatever. Yeah, the restaurant would have the ability to kind of, you know, effectively spill out into the grass, you know, weather permitting and that sort of stuff. You know, hopefully, that is an inducement to get, you know, kind of the right restaurateur and a great restaurateur, like, in place, as is also that kind of entertainment space that's next door as well. But, yeah, we'd love to kind of have that kind of extend out. And I think you can do other things outside there, too, right? You could maybe have, you know, have live music, you could project a movie, you know, up on the wall, like, you know, the more we can kind of, you know, bring the restaurant out and, you know, the public in, right, I think the better, yeah.
I have a question. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Are you looking at any, I have a couple of questions, maybe, but are you looking at any tax credits or anything like that for the project?
So, historic, yes, we are just beginning to look at historic tax credits. My understanding is the whole downtown area has been a historic district. This is notified as contributing buildings, so I think kind of like step one is there. We have the architects that we're working with, they've done a number of buildings kind of in the area that have leveraged the historic tax credits before, so, and they have some consultants that they've worked with in that area. So, I've got a kind of very, I'll call it, high-level understanding of what that flow looks like, but my, you know, it is a very, you know, specific process. And, yes, we are, we're bringing in consultants to kind of look at it to hopefully, you know, confirm that this project will be able to take advantage of those tax credits.
Right. And I'll always say, we shouldn't let zoning get in the way of a good idea, but just from a zoning perspective, what would you need from the town? Figure that out, conditional use, special needs permit, or rezoning, or what would make it...
My understanding is it's currently Zone B1, which is mixed-use, so as long as it's that 75-25 mix between residential and commercial, that, you know, it's by right use, and so, that, we'll fall within that, right? I think it's about, right now, it's about 60% residential with the plan that I just talked about, so it falls within that 75-25.
Okay, great.
So, I don't, yeah, I don't think we'll need anything on the zoning side.
And I guess the last thing is, I know we kind of opened up our, a lot of communities are getting away from real rigid parking standards, which I think is fine, and a few years ago, I know we sort of exempted, no, we sort of, we exempted all Main Street properties from having to provide parking, and, you know, I want it to be lenient with you as well, but there is a reality, you will have to have some parking there. That public lot, I would say it's probably full 25% of the time on very specific times of the week, otherwise, it's probably maybe 30% full at any given time. What would be the, your idea about parking, you know, how much you might need, and, you know, what we could do to help you or, you know, lease spaces or...
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. So, I've done, I've taken some look at the parking requirements due to the zoning code, and, you know, based on kind of everything that we have planned for the building, like, there's going to be quite a bit kind of required, right, under that. So, I think we'll, you know, that's a discussion that we'll have to, we'll have to wade into. Specifically, and right now, I want to be clear, we actually have no parking spaces. So, they're parking on, I'll call it, the part of Virginia Avenue that abuts the building that's closest to Campbell Street. That is town, that's town property, right? We run up to the, the building runs up to the property line, right? And then, as you turn to that grass place in the back, and there, I think there are nine spots up there in that, what I call the upper part. The lower part has 10 spots, which includes one handicap, accessible spot. And that, that, those spots, that, those spots are actually land that is owned, you know, that's part of the property, 15 Campbell, but has been leased to the city, right? As is, I think, a whole bunch of the spots back in that, I'm going to call it the alleyway, right? That alleyway back there, Virginia Ave, have been leased to the city, and it's my understanding, this is courtesy of, I think Brian walked me through the history, I guess there was a grant that the town saw and then received or whatever, and the requirement for that grant was that y'all had control of that property. Apparently, every other, I guess, everybody else that leased their land to the city has an actual paper lease. 15 Campbell does not have a paper lease. I am like, you know, anxious to get that thing papered so that y'all, y'all have the thing that you need, but I think it also benefits 15 Campbell, too, just to have, you know, it shows it on the plat. I don't think there's any disagreement as to like whether that land is leased or not. We just probably should have a piece of paper that represents that thing, and I'm open, it sounds like you, guys, probably have pretty good forms for those with the other landowners that y'all have leased for, so be happy to do that whenever. Getting back to parking, so those 10 parking spots, which are the only ones that actually sit on the property, are leased, you know, are leased to the town, y'all control those, right? And so, here's, you know, here's the situation, I think, we're in, which is, for the businesses, right, that are there, I'm less worried about, you know, parking for the co-working space, because I've spent, again, you know, been here almost every day, you know, all days of the week, right, over the last couple of months, and fairly frequently, and there's plenty of parking there for kind of the co-working space and what's going to happen there. You know, look, for the restaurant, like, I hope the restaurant's wildly successful, and I hope that, you know, there are lots and lots of cars, you know, related to the restaurant, and like, but I feel like, you know, within what is a reasonable walking distance to that restaurant, there's plenty of, there's plenty of space, right? I think my concern with respect to parking is for the apartments, right? Because I think, you know, some, it's primarily kind of a safety issue, right? Like, you come back to your apartment at night, like, I think we need one space per apartment unit for the people that are living there. I mean, that is, you know, that's at least my hope, right? That's, that's my hope. Now, obviously, you know, the town controls all that parking along there. I think, again, I think there are 19 spots between the lower and the upper. Y'all control that parking. I, you know, I think we'd be happy to talk about, like, if there are projects that need, you know, especially parking projects, right, that we can help out with in the town in order to kind of put more spaces back, we'll call it, on the market to replenish the ones that hopefully, that sit along, sit along the building. That would be great. But I, you know, look, I understand that that's just, that's just our perspective. There may be plenty of other perspectives.
I think your perspective is good, but my, I would say, just providing spaces in even where we, we, as in the town, say, hey, look, these 10 spaces can be dedicated toward, and it's just my opinion, can be dedicated for the residents that live there, you know, during certain times, you know, like, maybe on weekends, it's different or something, but these are your spaces that your residents could use. The other spaces, sort of like everybody else that comes into Main Street, it's sort of just wide spaces. When we have a public park there by the, you know, a public park near by the bridge, that's wide open. You know, I'm willing to amend the code, make it as easy as possible, but there is a practicality to it, that you want to be sure that the folks that live there do at least, and, you know, have a place they can consistently park at, and I'm willing, if other folks are, I think they would be working with you to maybe to amend the code, just as long as it felt like there were spaces that were, you know, for those full-time residents. I think that's one of the priorities. The rest of it, kind of been like the rest of the folks do in town, you know, that come downtown and park, so I have no issue with that.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Anybody else? Jason?
I'd just say, obviously, the parking is the concern. When I looked over this information, you know, even prior to tonight, I was reading through that, and let me first say, before I open my mouth on anything else, I appreciate the enthusiasm, I like the plan, I like the concept, I think the idea is fantastic with the different uses of that space and the direction you're going. I've just got to be honest here tonight. I do have a real concern of how that would ever work with 20 tenants, you know, 20 residents, which, at least a car per space, most places are many residents, if it's a couple, there's going to be two cars per space. I realize these are one-bedroom apartments, but I'm sure many of this may be couples or something. So, we could realistically have 30 or more cars needing to park each night, you know, there. And I think that's even, maybe even on the conservative side, before we ever even think about the restaurant, you know, customer base and all of that. So, and I live, that's a shortcut for me, so I cut through there like five times a day. I'm not exaggerating, seven days a week. So, I see that lot where sometimes it's not a whole lot there, I see it where it's full. It's, you know, depends on which time of day and, you know, what day of the week and stuff, but I think that, I think we're, as a council, just in my view, I think we really need to look at this close and see what type of impact. My biggest concern right now is all the existing businesses that face Main Street, right, in that area, that a lot of the employees, customers as well, with gathering grounds, with Neston High, Virginia Gift Shop, all of that, you know, there's a lot of, I realize they've got street parking, but I know what I've personally seen through the years, you know, a lot of people pulling in back, myself, too, to walk around front of those businesses. So, as we move forward with this, just me personally, I've got a genuine concern, and as much as I'd love to see what you're speaking of come to a reality, I don't want to have a big negative impact on existing businesses that are part of that shared space that we're talking about, that's a pretty small number of parking spaces compared to what we're talking about adding into that area. So, anyway, just, and trying to come up, I mean, I'm not saying no tonight. It's not that. It's just, I think we've got a huge challenge on how do we get the adequate parking that's truly needed for what the plans are for that building. That's not two blocks away, you know, and your residents aren't going to want to walk, you know, two blocks. Two blocks, yeah. So, that's a challenge.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to take a minute. At your 6 o'clock, the train depot and the public parking there, every night, it's not even a third, I mean, the train depot is totally empty after 6 o'clock, almost every night. I mean, same thing with the, you know, the lease lots back there. I mean, it's really just certain times, so, you know, when people are at home at night, most of them, those lots are empty. I mean, until maybe, you know, 9:00, you know, the next morning sometime, so I think it'd be work through, so it's just my humble opinion.
That's an interesting idea, exploring kind of dedicated parking, but only dedicated parking, you know, I don't know, after 5:00, you know, after 5:00 PM, right, when hopefully, yeah, you know, most of those businesses, right, have, you know, have timed out. Which, because I think you raise two things, right? There's one about like impacting the other businesses in the area, right, which we certainly don't want to do, right? That's just not fair for us to come in and do something that negatively impacts them, right? Like, I think we got to think, we think hard about that. And then, the other thing is just your, I think what I'll call the broader parking, I don't know, challenge or long-term trajectory, right? Which is like, yes, like, this building, hopefully, like, if it's successful, right, and we have, you know, a successful restaurant and co-working space and full apartments, right? And, you know, and music shows and community events, and it'll bring people in, and there's going to be a large need for parking, but I have that, you know, I don't know, hope, desire for Lou Ray, like, in general, right? It's like more businesses come in and more people come in, right? Like, and I agree with you, I think, like, thinking about parking, like, holistically from a town perspective, again, like, I've seen, you know, how this story ends in plenty of other, like, cities, and if, you know, at a certain point in time, you know, you can get ahead of parking and parking situations now, but if you wait, I'm just going to pick a time 10 years from now, right, when it's very different, right? And you look at it like, oh, we need parking and land costs are up here, and it's just like, you know, there's not a lot you can do, right? So, yeah, I'm on 100% of my, I mean, whatever, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't know what the answer is, but like, I think what, you know, maybe this building is emblematic of like what I think slash hope is a longer-term problem, which is, you know, which is parking, and like, how do you build a strategy now to future-proof?
Yep. I agree with you on that, and that's, it is the challenge that's here right now. I could say, which is to share, so this, before I was ever on town council, there was a piece of property just two doors up from where we sit here at the corner of the train tracks, an open field, and it was for sale, and it was for sale for years. And I can remember mentioning to some people with the town then, it's like, be an ideal place to purchase for parking, and it would have the ability, especially with the elevation, to become a, you could actually add a parking deck, you know, a second or a third level. Property was never sold, it's now got storage buildings on it, and would have been a prime thing, but you're right, we need to be looking at those things, because when we're looking at buildings that are sitting empty and someone like yourself willing to make the investment and take the chance on something like this, and like I said, I love your, love the thought, love the concept, but the reality is the parking's got to work with it.
Yes.
You know, it has to, or it winds up, you know, affecting others as well as, and you not getting the, you're not getting the return of the business or whatever.
Right, nobody's going to want to go to a restaurant if they can't find parking, nobody's going to want to, you know, rent an apartment if they can't find...
Wanted to work for you as well.
Yeah, it's got to, it's got to work for everybody.
Right.
Hundred, yeah, 100%, so, you know, I'd like, I don't know what that process is, I don't know if that's a, like, long-term parking study or whatever, but I'm more than happy to...
We need to be looking at it.
Yeah, participate, help in whatever way that I can to make that thing, to make that thing happen, because I think, you know, we've got a vested, obviously have a vested interest, and also, I think it's part of the holistic, like, you're building, you know, again, you're future-proofing your community with workforce housing, you're future-proofing your community with parking, all these, like, you know, making, you know, continuing to make Lou Ray as livable as it is today in the future, even when, you know, it looks a little bit different potentially.
Is the project fixed at 20 apartments, or is that negotiable, or...
That's negotiable, yeah, I mean...
A number that has to, yeah, for...
There's no magic, there's, 20, if you, you know, we looked at the building, we said, okay, like, we'd like to preserve the room that has the co-working space in it, I don't know if y'all have been in it, but it's got this beautiful hand-cut timber gable to, like, I mean, it's just absolutely stunning, and so, I would love to find a use to preserve that room as it is, right? And then, obviously, the first floor doesn't, you know, it's probably less desirable for apartments, so we're like, okay, everything else, everything else we allocated towards apartments, and then, just kind of how those, you know, apartments laid out in there was how we came up with the number 20. And there was, that was not a targeted number, there's nothing magic about it. If, you know, y'all have other ideas and you're like, hey, we need more, we need less, like, I'm open to, open to feedback.
Definitely not thinking more, given the conversation we had about parking. I mean, do we need more? Yes, for that particular, yeah, address, the property, I don't know that it would work, yeah. Well, it's good that there's some flexibility in it. I didn't hope it was, you know, necessary for the math to work out.
Counsel, anybody else? Brian, what would be the zoning issues there? Are there any?
Mr., I'll call him Brad.
Thank you.
We've talked about it before, Zone B1, so mixed-use is allowable there from mixture of residential and commercial type activities, as long as at least one of the uses controls 25% or more of course base, and then, it's my right. So, really, the uses that he's saying here, all of these are eligible in that type of building, that site, it's just the physical assets that need to go along with that to provide for those residents, those are the, that's the real challenge right now. So, one of the things that we've talked about, of course, the planning commission's going to take a look at this also at their August 14 meeting, they've already received electronically, they're chewing on it right now, so, you know, the big thing is, is there a way to change the mix? I know Brad and his team, their primary driver is workforce housing, which is great, but that does bring the parking element along with it when you put that in there. So, are there other uses or changing the mix within this building to provide more of one of these other... of these other things and less of the apartment workforce component to bring that number down to where it's more manageable in that neighborhood? So these are all conversations that, you know, there is parking along cave. We had looked about putting parking on both sides of the circle on time. There are several things that we can do, but again, they have a study period for this project, and so we're in the middle of that right now. So we need to try to give them as much information as we can. That's what we've been working on.
Just a question, and this more on the zoning thing, but just to grasp, to help me grasp this, if, I realize the, the B1 designation and this mixed use and the percentage, if this old building didn't exist and this, this was just the same square footage of lot there, same-sized lot, could what we're speaking of be built brand-new today and not have to meet 20?
Yep.
So the same thing could be built with 20 apartments and not need to have off-street parking?
Correct. Now, this, this is the issue. Current off-street parking requirement along East Main Street, West Main Street for 250 feet either side, requires the owner to, to their best ability to incorporate as many of the required off-street parking spaces that are needed onto their space. If they are not able to do that, okay, they can request a waiver through the town manager to the council, and council can consider that waiver. But they are required to try to meet as many of the off-street parking spaces on their property as, as their property allows. So in this particular case, that building that could go back there might be half that size to provide as the maximum size of off-street parking that you could.
Right.
Now, say that the number was 30 spaces, and they're able to provide 20 spaces on the property by building a half-size structure, then they could request a waiver through the town manager to the council for the remaining 10, and the council could review and either approve or deny that. So that's what the ordinance is set up to do right now.
Right. Yep, right.
I mean, could they, I bet they go, look at lease some spots or something. Like you said, Circle, Circle Street, I mean, that's right there. I mean, you've got the, I mean, right against it is, you know, sign, I guess RJ. I mean, there's a lot, it's a lot right there that's, that's totally vacant, you know, 95% of the time. You have to cross the railroad tracks, that's not exactly ideal, but, I mean, that could be a, you know, parking area. So I'm just pretty adamant that I didn't think this building would, would've been sitting there for years. And I'm not saying anyone's telling them to get lost because, you know, park it, but that would be a sin, in my opinion. I mean, just like, work and see if we can find some lease space. Circle Street, you're right, I mean, that's, that's always, people can park there. I mean, I'd be happy to go to downtown Luray and I'll be able to find a parking spot. I mean, that's great. I mean, people are there, people are living there. Gosh, we need apartments. You know, I mean, this is a great reuse of that building. I, you know, I don't want, we need to figure out some parking, but we can, I think we put our heads together, we can find something. And I was the one, I believe, that wrote that code to provide this flexibility in the, in the first place. We adopted it 10, 12 years ago, to provide this flexibility, because we did not want to turn people away that came into downtown because they had some kind of, you know, ridiculous parking requirement for that, provide, you know, whatever it was. There's, if you walk around, like I said, you walk around there at night right now, you'll find plenty of areas. Now, whether we have to lease some privately, some on public, on-street, like Circle, you have access to cross the train, to the train depot after six. I think we can work that out. It would just, there's even some parking right there on Virginia Avenue, you know, as you, you know, you go toward the bridge. I mean, there's, there's some spots there that people could, that's just living in a town or a city. I mean, that's just what people do. You know, I just couldn't, this is exciting for this building. Like I, like I said, I, I thought it was sitting there for years. And so I, I, I wouldn't do anything, look at anything to, to make it work.
Who owns the gravel lot between the train depot and the co-op property?
They'll sell it to you.
They don't want it.
No, we tried.
Yeah. They'll lease it to you for a good price.
They won't lease it. Not even a 99-year lease. So it took two years and application fee and a lot of back and forth with Atlanta, Georgia, and ended with a no. Sorry, we don't do that anymore. So.
Everybody I talked to didn't even know they had it.
I'd love to have, I'd love to have that lot. But we did, looking, to your point, Brad and I did talk about potential lease space, you know, around various areas through private property ownership, and there is the possibility of that. So I think that that's part of the things that they're looking at moving forward is, you know, how do we, how do we resolve the issue? You know, I think we know what that is, but how, how do we get to the, where we need to be.
Are, are there, are there projects in the town, like parking projects, or it could be other projects, but we're talking about parking right now? Are there parking projects in the town that we could assist with, right? So that, to the, again, to the extent that we are taking, you know, whatever, 19 spaces offline, certain hours of the day, we can, you know, I don't know, replenish those, right? So at least it's, you know, a zero sum, if, if not an additive game, right? Are there other?
We're working on two separate parking areas right now. One is in behind, it was the old, the former Blue Ridge Bank, parking lots, the upper and lower decks, behind Bright Speed, which are behind the post office, which is not too far away from this. The, the second one is down Broad Street, North Broad Street, where we have basically flat lots there in the blood plane that we were going to convert for public parking there, for people who are able to walk from there to East Main Street or West Main Street. And so those are areas that, both projects that we have on our plan to improve those areas for the general public parking, just to make them available for everybody. Now, the Bright Speed lot, we do have to provide between four and six spaces there per lease agreement with the contractors who work for Bright Speed, but the remainder of that, those lots are available for.
How, how many spaces would fit in that Bright Speed lot? Do you know?
Probably the more lot can take, with the trucks being in the back, maybe another 12, 14 spaces there. The upper lot, probably, with two trucks being up there, probably, hmm, maybe 20.
Twenty, oh, wow, okay.
Twenty-two total. Depending how you lay it out, you know, you lay it out correctly, you probably can maximize some spaces up there.
I mean, yeah, either, like, again, either project we'd be, you know, interested in supporting, especially, that Bright Speed one sounds really interesting and obviously, like, you know, when we talk about, like, hey, what sort of traffic congestion or parking congestion do we create, like that, you know, hopefully, because it's so close, we'll solve, you know, we'd solve some of that.
All right, anybody else?
Thank you. I mean, it's exciting.
Gotcha. I'm excited, yeah. Anybody, anybody has, you know, questions later, wants to talk about anything later? I am always available. Like I said, I'm here almost every week. I think I'm here Wednesday of next week, so please, no, Brian's got my contact information. Again, this is the thing I like to talk about the most, so, you know, please be in touch.
Well, again, so will we refer to the planning commission on August 14?
Yeah, the planning commission's going to take this up. They're already talking about it now individually, you know, reviewing the, they got the same information you guys got, just a different letter that said, planning commission versus town council.
It might be a good idea for you to plan to be at that meeting if you came.
Oh, yeah, 100%, I'll be there.
Yeah. So he's aware of the date and the time, and different day, different time, 7:00 PM for that one, and always working. So we'll have him there, and then, anytime, they're going to be doing their own research and hopefully trying to find some options.
But again, thank you. We get, we get absolutely giddy when we think about redoing some of these older buildings and.
I'm excited too.
But there are challenges, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. If it was easy, somebody would have done it.
Challenges or opportunities as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you again for being here tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 18 Campbell Street, depot operation. Ms. Hilliard, you have good news for us?
I do. Thank you all, Mayor and Council, for having me tonight to give you the update. So as you probably read through the press releases or the information that I've passed through, is, yes, the board supervisor voted last Monday night, out of the three proposals that were submitted, and they voted to re-contract back with the Chamber of Commerce. So we are in full operation again and back open, and I only have to find one more staff person. Clancy is staying on board, and Lori has agreed, she was going to go with the county, so she was kind of in limbo in between. So she's agreed to stay on as well. So I've got two existing employees and just need to find one more. But we're back open, seven days a week, nine to five, all holidays, and, yeah, we're excited to, to put all this past us and move forward. Any questions?
Yeah. Anybody?
Just also want to thank, thank you to you all for, for your all's support. I know this hasn't been easy because it's your all's building, and you all didn't want to see it closed as well, and neither did we. So I'm just glad that it all, all worked out and the way it did, so, yeah.
Thank you again. I know this has been difficult for you as well, and it's been, but it all worked out.
It did. It did. All right. Well, thank you all so much.
Thanks, Gina.
Appreciate the debate. Thank you.
Okay. Online public notices and advertising. Mr. Arrington?
I have been priming the pump for, what, two, two or three years and fighting the General Assembly in Richmond. And with Brian's cooperation, I'm proud to say that Page Valley News was the first media outlet to print the first online-only public notice in the state of Virginia, and editor and publisher magazine is trying to confirm as it's the first in the nation. So this is a turning point for community journalism. Oregon and a few places out west and in the Pacific Northwest are arguing that they are not first, but Betsy Edwards, who's the executive director of the Virginia Press Association, is very knowledgeable of this subject, and she says that Virginia is the first to pass a law of this nature as of July 1. And I think it was July 16, the judge signed off on our petition, and on July 22, we made a little footnote to history of, the average citizen will never know what happened, but, but we did. And I want to thank Brian for his questions and all. I want to make sure everybody is comfortable with the process. It is new. It's new to everybody. It's new to the judge who approved our petition. It's, it was new to some of the legislatures, legislators in Richmond who, not this year, but two years ago, when I joined this battle, it had been going on for several years, you know, they were sitting there saying, well, newspapers are going to be here forever. And I said, sure, they are, but they're going to be online, you know? And so they finally came around this past year when we partnered with the Virginia Press Association and got an amendment to the state code that, up until that point, had required since the beginning of public notices that they be in print in a newspaper. Many of you, you saw in the packet, our application petition to the court, which answers a lot of questions. I think I've worked through some of the questions that the town attorney and Brian had. I'm just going to run through several things really quickly, just for a few minutes here. As I've said before, this is obviously going to reach a bigger audience. Sometimes it's hard to pin down exactly how many people, let's say, are in Luray that are on the site, because Google Analytics does break it down by city, as opposed to zip code, where the newspaper would be by zip code. But somebody like Harrisonburg or a much larger city, they have multiple zip codes, et cetera, et cetera. So it's kind of hard to pin down sometimes, because sometimes that stuff is routed through a certain servers. We have a huge readership in Baltimore, but I'm sure not all those people are actually in Baltimore, et cetera, et cetera. So I do believe that, though, even with all of that considered, that we have a much better, bigger readership and better accountability. The newspaper can only, or printed newspapers can only tell you how many papers they printed and how many they circulated. They have no idea how many people went through 13 pages and went to the B or D section and looked on that page and looked at that ad, but you know what? I can tell you how many people clicked on that exact page and stood, stood right there and saw it. Now, the number may not be impressive, but I can tell you how many, how many people saw the public notice. I mean, I don't expect it to drive up our, our traffic hugely, but we are accountable in that nature. Better flexibility for staff and scheduling. I mean, we can, you know, if I'm sitting at my computer and I get a call from Brian, I can get it up in five minutes, or at the very least, if I'm away or away from my desk within 24 hours. If you miss this publication cycle for the paper, you might be delayed seven or eight days, and you may not be able to make your requirements. One thing about those requirements, and Brian talked about, can't have a public hearing notice 28 days, from 28 days before up till seven days before. Well, the, and the one thing I want to clear up too, our flat rate of $95, and this wasn't clear in my literature or in my email to, to Brian, but it's just like the newspaper charges, that's a weekly rate. That's the same as our, the newspaper charges, they're going to charge you for a seven-day period. All the other ads on my website are seven-day sales, same here. So that might have been a misunderstanding that it was a one-time charge. But the reason that could be confusing is, when you schedule with the newspaper, you're scheduling for a particular production, a particular issue. Now, once we, once Brian says, all right, it needs to go this week and this week, we'll charge you for each week that's required. If it's a one-week requirement, we'll charge you for one week. Whatever is asked for in the order is what we'll charge you for. However, that ad stays up on the site 24/7 through infinity. The state law requires, I think, that we keep it in our archives at least three years, but we're not, we have no plans to ever take it down. And by the time we get so far into the future, we have to worry about having too much memory and all, it'll be a good problem to have. But, but that, so for example, you had a 14-day requirement on the ad, one or both ads we posted this past week for the upcoming August 14 planning commission meeting. So once we, we have met that 14 days, you're getting an extra nine days still on the site right where it was, so you're getting 23 days before the hearing, paying for 14. So, because you're only required to do 14, so that's all you have to pay for. So you're getting additional coverage in that way. If you have a problem with it, if you need to change something, you can deal with a human being right now. I know that you all have been placing ads with the column system online for a long time, so you probably have it down pat and it goes very quickly. But what happens if there's a problem? Now, when I wanted to place my notice of intent that I was filing for this, this right to publish public notices, I went to the Luray office, the office that got up here out on East Main. I was told then I had to talk to somebody in Harrisonburg. I talked to somebody in Harrisonburg, told me I had to talk to somebody in Maryland, talked to somebody in Maryland, told me I had to go online and do it. So, you know, if there's a problem, Brian can get me on the phone like that, change can be made like that. So it's a lot of accessibility and you can talk to a human being. Budgeting with the being a flat rate, I think it's easier for you guys to plan for that in your budgeting process, as opposed to, you know, that $95 rate, surely you've got some small ads that are less than that, and you've got some that are way above. In fact, I would say, I don't know if the figure is three-fourths or two-thirds, but I would imagine the majority of your ads are over $100 per run. So I think you're going to save money overall, hundreds perhaps, thousands over the course of a budgeting cycle. And also, I'd say the flat rate gives you that, that advantage to know what you're planning for your budget. There's no end date, it's, there's, you don't have to worry about when the ad comes down or this, it's there forever, it's archived, it's accessible. And think about too, we're not only thinking about Luray readers, but what about out-of-town developers who want to access public notices? What about people who want to put bids on projects for RFPs? What about out-of-town property owners? Are they going to have to drive to 7-Eleven, get a copy of the paper, go to page 13? You know, you know what I'm saying? I'm making a comparison of the two mediums. Let's see, also cost. We have a free, free website, and according to the state law, you cannot put up a paywall in front of public notices, they have to be free. Well, our entire website is free. Some, some newspapers are not, or you can read so many articles and then you have to get a subscription. Newspaper, you got to go to the store or get a subscription in the mail, you have to pay for that, or you got to pay Albert down on the corner to get a copy. So, I mean, and we're totally free, so there's no inhibitions that way to the, to the citizens. Audience reach, I've already talked about that. We, we're currently at about 30,000-plus users a month, 100,000-plus page views a month. And for a site that only covers Page County, Virginia, I don't think that's too bad. Now, Nike.com at any given second has 10,000 users on that site at any given second, but Nike.com is worldwide and pretty big, you know? But for what we cover right here in Luray, I think we're doing, we're doing pretty good and still gaining steam. The quick, I'll quickly go through the process so you can understand what we're doing. So, Brian, where, instead of having to go on to the online system, he can literally cop and paste, send me an email, and the only thing he really needs to tell me is if it, the start date. Everything, I'll take care of absolutely everything else that needs to be done. So, when he sends it to me, I'm gonna post it on the site, I'm gonna immediately send a confirmation email with a link to the ad saying that I have posted it and let us know of any corrections. I'm then gonna post it on social media, which the newspaper's not gonna do. I'm then gonna post it on our front page, which newspapers haven't done since the early 1900s, have been the public notices in the front page of the A section. And then, I'm gonna turn around and post it on the state website. And all of that'll happen in just a matter of a few minutes. Boom, it's up, ready to go. I've already got an account, set it with VPA. They actually maintained that site and charged us a nominal fee, 40 cents a post or some, to maintain that site. So, we, we get billed by them quarterly for that, that part of it. I ran through pretty much everything. Oh, one thing that I found annoying, and I'm gonna move, because I didn't want any extra obstacles or diversions or things for people. If you've been on our site, you notice that we have contracted with a national ad company that has the pop-ups that come up in the in-ad and the big Kroger ad, even there's, there's no Kroger in Page County and that kinda thing. That's a service that we've contracted with, that we get a little bit out of, not, not a lot, but a little. But we don't have those pop-ups on, like, say, our obituary pages. We're gonna do the same thing for public notices, we're gonna take them off of there. Because what it does, the in-story ads will sometimes separate the headline or where things are at. We want it to be a clean look. So, we've actually put in a request to that company called Empower Local that's gonna take that off within, hopefully, the next 24, 48 hours. I went through a lot. I did it quick. Do you have any questions? I really do think that you're getting a much larger reach, better service, better customer service, and probably gonna save you money at the end of the day as well, so.
So, can we, if a lot more people start coming to the meetings and complaining, can we, can we blame you?
Absolutely. I get blamed a lot for everything anyway, you know? I was in the middle of that visitor's center thing, right?
Just one question for you, Randy. So, under those scenario, let's say your website were to go down for a day during that two-week notice period, and that might be more of a question for Brian.
We only need two 24-hour periods, I think, right now. And the town attorney's gonna outline that on the 12th, but really, you know, you got a newspaper, it's published once per week. So, as long as we're exceeding, meeting or exceeding that time period, then I think we're meeting the state statute, but he's gonna have more details. Go, Randy, Mike.
The law, the law actually states that if there's a, you know, an act of God or something, or if it goes down, that, you know, that you will still be, you will still have met your requirement for publication. Because I, I'm trying to think the worst, and we haven't, we, we haven't had problems for a while, but I'm trying to think, the longest we've ever been down is maybe two days that I can think of. I don't even know if it was that long. It might not even been 24 hours, but I don't handle that end of it. I knew we, there was some time period where we were updating some things and we had to go down and transition, but I think we're past all of that, and I don't foresee anything. But then again, you know, the internet could go out, you know?
But you are saying on top of that, it's already submitted to the state site, so there's redundancy.
Yeah, there's multiple, there's redundancy, there's multiple levels of where you guys are covered. For example, you had a 14-day requirement on this, this notice that I've got up right now, where you're gonna have 23 days prior to the hearing. So, I mean, there's a lot of cushion there. So, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, and, you know, I, talking about the internet going down, I would equate it to a snowstorm when people can't get to 7-Eleven to get the papers out. Pretty much, yeah. Any other questions? Thank you all.